Recording in progress.
The United States of America and the city of the public, which stands one nation and our liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Conley?
Present.
Councilmember Diaz?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Well, at this time, do we have any public comment on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. We will move into our item of business today, interviews and appointment of a successor to vacant council seat, is their staff report.
There is a staff report, just give me one second, I thought I shared my screen, which clearly I did not. There we go.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, Amy Nelson, City Manager, today. You are here to complete interviews and appoint a successor to the vacant City Council seat. So tonight, or this afternoon's process is, you began with six applicants, one of those applicants, Michael Kine, has withdrawn his name, and the City Council will be interviewing five applicants this afternoon for the vacant City Council seat. Applicants will be seated in the conference room until their interview time, or admitted to the Zoom meeting at the time of their interview. Applicants will be interviewed in the order, their names are drawn out of a hat or a bowl, we kept it spicy, so we don't know if it's a hat or a bowl, we think it's a bowl. At their interview time, applicants will be asked to provide a two-minute overview about themselves and why they are interested in serving on the City Council. Applicants will then be interviewed with questions provided in advance, they were part of the staff report, and once the applicant is interviewed, they may remain in the City Council chambers or on Zoom to review the rest of the process with everyone. After all interviews are complete, there will be an opportunity for public comment. The general election in November 2026 will determine the seat, and then again in 2028 in compliance with state law. After public comment has closed, each council member can provide their first, second, and third applicant choices in writing on the voting sheets provided to the, their voting sheets provided to you this afternoon, and then you will share those with the city clerk. A five-minute break will be taken to count written votes, applicant choices from currently seated council members will then be shared after the five-minute break. If there is consensus, at least three council members in favor of one applicant, the council may proceed to appoint the applicant by a motion and a vote. If there is less than a majority for an applicant, the Order of Merit will apply, and the council's second and third written choices will be reviewed. Applicants will be given three points for a first choice, two for second, and one point for third. If after two or three rounds a top applicant can be identified, the council shall proceed with a motion and a vote. And this is an example of the Order of Merit process table that we will be displaying after the five-minute break, this is similar to what we did in March. It should be noted that this process, along with any other process, could still potentially result in a tie, since there are only four of you, and if that were to occur, the council will need to consider how best to proceed to fill the vacancy. You can make a motion to continue the appointment process to a subsequent date, you can flip a coin or draw a name from a hat or a bowl, and that was recently done with the city of Blue Lake. And then once an applicant is selected, they will need to take the oath of office, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on tonight's process, and if there are no questions, we can begin drawing the names out of a bowl to determine the order of interviews.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? I think we can draw names.
Okay. The first interviewee is Tina Christensen.
Good afternoon. Could you give us a brief history and rundown on Tina Christensen?
Sure. I've been in this community probably seventy of seventy-seven years. My family started out in the restaurant and bar business, the Vista Del Mar, B C's, where the gazebo is, my father had a bar and restaurant there, it was all in prohibition, of course. But that's, you know, that's where my family hails from, and I started into real estate in 1974, have two children, I think some of that's in my other stuff, but mainly real estate, and got out of Humboldt County because I had two high school kids, and I wanted them to see if they wanted to live in more metropolitan areas, so we went to Santa Rosa, and from there into Placerville, and my kids graduated from Placerville High, and decided that they liked the rural better than they did the city. So we moved back here, and my brother remarried, and so I watched his bar and restaurant for a couple of years, and then I went back into real estate here in Eureka with Coldwell Banker Cut and Realty. All of my kids live here, and so thus my grandkids, and that's been my life is, and real estate.
Thank you, and just as a, why are you interested in being on the City Council?
Well, I think that I can bring maybe a different perspective. Having been in real estate, not only belonging to the organization, but building the organization, but I also went and did a lot of community work through H A R with Toys for Kids, I spent ten years on Toys for Kids cheering it. I've also worked with the Catholic Church, and Hum C P R, and a couple other organizations to do the Betty Chin shelters, and we worked very hard on that, got those put in. Fortuna, I was always a Eureka girl, so Fortuna was not, you know, in sixty-six, that's not where you went, because we were rivals, so I never thought of Fortuna as being a home until my kids came here. And started out on Highway thirty-six, went to Rocky Lane, and now in Fortuna proper itself for about the last four or five years. I think Fortuna has a lot to offer, and I think I've stood at the meetings a couple, three different times, saying where I thought Fortuna, you know, had so much to offer, it's, it's like a hometown. I think I can maybe benefit from my experience in development, and my experience in working with different committees.
Thank you. We have some questions.
Sure.
Each person will all take a turn.
I'm first in line, so I get the first question. Can you share an example of a difficult decision you've had to make in leadership or professional role, where your ethical choice wasn't necessarily the easiest or most popular? How did you approach it, and what was the outcome?
Yeah, I, I sat on a couple associations, and in, I was on the Board of Directors, and there was an issue with executive committee and the CEO, and it, it was an opposition to what I felt was, I felt they were wrong in some things that they were doing, and ethically, they were wrong, and I, I told the appropriate agencies that I felt that they were wrong, and I have no problem, you know, saying, saying what I feel is right, and if it's legally right, then you should be following those patterns, and no matter what committee you sit on, no matter what agency you sit on. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm second. So mine's a two-part question. The first is, how would you approach economic development in order to increase revenue for the city of Fortuna? And the second part is, what would you do differently than what is currently being done to increase revenue?
You know, I, we had a meeting last week with Michelle Bushnow, and I asked her the same question. I said, what are you going to do about Garverville? Because if you travel to Garverville right now, there's nothing. I mean, where she has her shop, there's one other store. So Garverville has to re- rename themselves, they have to come for another purpose than what it's always been. There's an agent in our office that has the BMO Inn, and they face the same thing. You know, you have this extravagant place that is just beautiful, but you've got to get people up here to see it, and so they have to reconfigure what, because of the cannabis industry has just totally decimated those areas. And I think Fortuna and Humboldt County, if you stop and look, and these are just kind of figures that I've pulled together, is that seventy percent of Humboldt County is city, county, state, and federal employees. So what's our industry? What, where are we getting our money? You know, how do we survive as a community if you have those things? So I think that Fortuna kind of has to take a look at that, I know they're trying to redefine themselves in Eureka with the waterfront and stuff like that. Well, Fortuna is the gateway to the redwoods. So, you know, we could do something like that, we could work more internally on bringing, I guess, more tourism, I mean, you go to Ferndale, you see how they have perfected their tourism, you know, we need, we need, we need sales tax, sales tax help fund everyone here. Also, property taxes help fund, and if you don't have a road to development or a future for your city, growth-wise, then you, you know, you, you need those property dollars coming in, and taxes are a real thing that everybody has to pay every year, twice a year, or once a year. So I would see that, you know, that's one way, I think the, you know, I have talked to Amy about the Mill District, I met with Sheri, and, and both about it, because I had clients that were interested in it, but that's a long ways away, and you have, you know, you have two exits off of a freeway, and I know you got one grant for one, congratulations, and, you know, but it's very hard coming off Kenmore Road, I live on Kenmore, that thing gets backed up. How do you put people, when you're coming in there, how do you put them into that side? How do you put them into the Levin Street side? So then I was thinking about that, and Amy talked about the roundabouts and everything, I thought, well, roundabouts, I guess, could work, so then I went down to, I went over to Arcata and looked at the one that came off the freeway at Gentoli there, and that one is a fast-paced, and you're going around that circle, so then I figured out, well, yeah, it could work. So I was, you know, I, I think you have to plan for wherever Fortuna wants to go, everybody, this community needs to come together. I think the study groups that have been had before need to be more robust, need to really have a picture in mind, and I think you need to look at some of the lands that you have, you know, that you have in reserves, because this is the only growth area in Humboldt County. I worked with the County of Humboldt, with the major builders, major developers, engineers, you name it, all of us were in a group together, and we did an actual land inventory of Humboldt County. You do realize that we only live on five percent of the land. The rest is rivers, forests owned by state and federal lands, and the mills. So, you know, when you only have that much, and you need growth for a whole county to grow, there's nothing in Eureka, you can't grow outside Eureka, they've been, Kirk Kramer's been ten years trying to develop something by the parks. You know, we have the vacant land down here, but it's all in your sphere of influence, and you need to start planning now to get it away from Humboldt County and Humboldt County taxes. So I hope I answered that. Long.
Long in detail. Details matter. So my follow-up, I guess, to that is, there's your process, what's your vision for Fortuna?
You know, I looked at that question, and I thought, well, I have a lot of visions, but that doesn't mean that's what, you know, I think that's why your community, your town halls and stuff like that are important, because I'm seventy-seven. I'm not going to be here for a long time for that community to really go, but I think that, I honestly think kids are our future, and I think that we have to, we have a responsibility to, to our children to develop more facilities, to help them grow, and to provide safe communities for them. So I am just... So I am just, I don't think there's any place in Humboldt County that has done what goes out Newburgh Road, starting with the Police Department, the Lucas Center, all of those. Those are beautiful buildings. They, they draw, they attract people, they're done very well. But they're not done with basically city funds. It's private individuals that do that stuff. So for me, you know, I think you need to let the markets kind of dictate where they need to go and let them prosper and grow, and then cities grow with it. But each person that comes in needs to have a plan and needs to see that you've got a plan set for what your community is going to look like in the future. And, you know, your towns, the town center is beautiful. I don't know what's going to happen with the mill site because I think there's a lot of things that pose issues, sewer, water, roads, where do you put all of these things? What's in the ground already? Do we have ideas on all of that? So.
Thank you.
Got the last question.
All right.
It's a long one. Frequently, the City Council is called upon to attend special meetings to make policy decisions outside of regular scheduled meetings. Regular meetings are on the first and third Monday of the month. Special meetings include items like the fee schedule and budget. How would you prioritize your role with the City Council and your other commitments?
Well, for one thing, it's just me. So I probably have a pretty open schedule. I take my committee work and different obligations as they come along. I try to create good calendars so I can be at those meetings. I think the best representation is the people that are here that can be here because that's what you've signed on for, is to do your duty to your community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Think we bring the next one in?
No, no. I'll leave. You want me to go tell them?
No, I got it. Thank you so much.
You can stay and have a seat here, and you may be the one getting sworn in. We don't know that yet.
Hey, guys.
Hello. Thank you for joining us today and your interest in running, running, interviewing for the City Council. And if you'd like to give us a brief, two-minute synopsis of Abe Stephens and why you want to run for City Council.
Sure. So appreciate you guys making the time and having me in and just, I guess, as far as I can reintroductions at least, I'm Abe Stephens. I'm kind of a local resident and business owner. I'm, you know, I'm from Humboldt originally, went to Fortuna High. My daughter goes to Fortuna High now. And I'm the owner of Humboldt Distillery, I'm kind of the head distiller slash traveling salesman slash kind of jack of all trades. And, you know, essentially, you know, it's, we've had some moderate success with the business. I'm not feeling like I need to be at work all the time now. My daughter is now a teenager. She doesn't necessarily want me hovering over her all the time. So I just have found myself with more available free time, kind of feel like I'd like to give back to the community a little more and feel like I have the time and experience that I could potentially be in a position to help out. And, you know, I have a vested interest in kind of the long-term success and, you know, of Fortuna. I just, you know, want to see, you know, all the residents have a good quality of life. So kind of that's, that's sort of my motivation, you know, for, you know, for throwing my hat into the ring for this. And as far as specific qualifications go, also happy to answer any questions.
We do have some questions for you.
Yep.
And I think Kyle Conley will start you off.
Sure.
Again, I'm first in the line, so I got the first question. Can you share an example of a difficult decision you've had to make in a leadership or professional role where the ethical choice wasn't necessarily the easiest or most popular? And how did you approach it and what was the outcome?
Yeah, it's kind of a tricky question. You know, I, you know, I'm fortunate, I've never really had to be in a position where I've had to make a, like a super unethical decision. But there are a lot of times where just kind of, you know, as a business owner, for instance, I have to make, you know, some, sometimes hard choices that, you know, I kind of have to live with. You know, one, for instance, is just choosing local versus choosing affordability. You know, so as a, as a manufacturer, we have a lot of, you know, material suppliers, you know, as one example, we do a lot of like custom-printed T-shirts and hats that we give away as kind of promotional items. And there is a local business here in Fortuna, Lotus Mountain, that does, you know, they print T-shirts and hats and stuff, you know, something that we specifically need. But it's, it's kind of tricky because we can get them for quite a bit cheaper from, you know, some out-of-the-area online, you know, print company. And, you know, it's, I, I do really appreciate the logic, and in fact, we always try and, you know, tell our customers to support local, you know, keep some money in the local economy and, you know, you're, we, you know, that's helping us, you know, keep our employees employed and, you know, all that. So at the end of the day, you know, we kind of, we kind of split the difference. We do some things, you know, we order online, sometimes some things we get from Lotus Mountain, even though we are paying more than we could, just to kind of help feel good about, you know, supporting them. And it's a little tricky, just again, you know, again, you know, the, the concept of supporting local is real, but, you know, the dollars are real too. And then, yeah, no, I, I mean, also as a business owner, you know, there's been times where we kind of were overly ambitious with kind of our hiring. We've had to lay off people. That's always just a really hard thing, you know, kind of having to, you know, sleep at night and knowing that I'd let someone go versus, you know, potentially taking a pay cut for myself, you know. Ultimately, at the end of the day, I kind of, I, you know, kind of have to weigh the pros and cons, kind of make the, the decision that's best for the business and for us. But it's still something that I don't take lightly.
Thank you. I have a second question. It's a two-part question. How would you approach economic development in order to increase revenue for the city of Fortuna? And the second part is, what would you do differently than what is currently being done to increase revenue?
So, you know, I think, you know, just from my kind of rudimentary or naive understanding, from what I gather with city revenue, it seems like most of the fees are coming from like city services, you know, rather than sales taxes. It seems like it would be good to try and pull whatever levers that we could pull to get more of those, more of the city revenue coming from sales taxes. You know, specifically because I think that's just a good measure of kind of the, I mean, consumer spending is, is a measure of, you know, kind of how healthy the economy is. And also, I think, just for the city itself, it's something that, you know, I think there is an opportunity to try and encourage more of. I think, obviously, with sales taxes, you're expecting, again, consumers to spend their money locally. And I think there are opportunities to kind of encourage more and healthier businesses. And I think doing, doing a little more to encourage local business, I mean, it's kind of sounds generic or cliche, but I think it is an actual legitimate strategy that there could be an opportunity to, to get more local businesses. I think, like, for instance, with my own business, you know, we are a manufacturing business. We create a product that we sell outside of the area. And so we're able to, you know, sell our spirits, you know, San Diego, wherever. And, you know, the, the sales revenue we get from that, we import that back into, you know, Fortuna, either goes into my own pocket or, you know, to my employees or whatever that we are able to spend locally. So I think encouraging the, you know, more of those types of businesses, you know, where they're making a product or a service that can sell outside of the area, kind of serves as a double, you know, bonus. But then beyond that, too, I think there's other areas. Obviously, grants are a big portion of, you know, revenue. It's a little less predictable. You know, I would be interested in going back and looking at, you know, historical grant applications and kind of trying to put, quantify what has been the grant approval, like approval rate, like, you know, what percent of our grants are getting approved versus rejected? And how is that compared to other communities? And are there any sort of process improvements that we can make that over the fut, the course of the future, our grant applications, you know, start having maybe a higher success rate? I guess, I don't know, I guess the original question was, how would I help? Can you repeat the original question? I might have got off on a tangent.
How would you approach economic development in order to increase revenue for the city of Fortuna?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, basically, I would try not to rely as much on the city fees and try to pull what levers we could on sales, increasing sales taxes, and then, you know, improving our success rate when it comes to grants. I think, you know, if you guys select like another qualified, you know, applicant for this position, one, one of my other thoughts I've had as far as like trying to give back to the community is maybe trying to start a business incubator. So that might be something I might try, you know, try next, or even if, you know, if I come onto the council that, you know, I might suggest. I think there is, there is a possibility of incubating, you know, you know, kind of fledgling business ideas and, you know, kind of business owners that they could probably benefit from just a little more, I don't know, a little, little helping hand, I guess you could say. So anyway, I don't, I've, I've got a lot of business ideas, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, now it's my turn. And hearing your different ideas, but ultimately, what is your vision for Fortuna?
So I think ultimately, my daughter's going to be graduating from high school in a few years. She's hopefully going to be going away to college. And I want Fortuna to be a spot that she will want to move back to after she's had a chance to like go out and see the world. And I think what that really comes down to is just making sure that all, all our local residents have a good quality of life. And so obviously, economics are a big part of that, you know, and it's from the city's perspective, you know, I'm sure, I mean, you know, I don't, I know there was a lot of controversy with the water and sewer rate increases, you know, stuff like that, that, you know, that, that the city has to make some hard choices. It does affect people's, you know, pocketbook. But beyond economics, there's also, you know, healthcare opportunities, you know, or availability, you know, as far as the city, you know, I want to make sure that we encourage that as much as we are able to. Affordable housing, you know, it's, be tough to live, you know, continue to live here or move back here if, you know, the cost of rent or mortgage is, you know, is, is, you know, is unrealistic. And obviously, when it comes to new housing development, that is something that, that is within the city's, you know, influence. And I think there are potentially things that the city could be doing to encourage more in-field development, obviously, more, it's a supply and demand issue, more housing units hopefully will translate to at least a slightly lower cost of living. But at the end of the day, like I said, mostly just it's a quality of life issue and just making sure that we can maintain that and improve on it. And, you know, everything else the city does, you know, public safety and city services, you know, just, you know, you know, making sure the city looks nice and not a bunch of potholes and all of that. I mean, it's, it's a, a lot, a lot of little pieces that go into that pie of, you know, you know, what you think of the community.
That's true. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I have the last question. Frequently, the City Council is called upon to attend special meetings to make policy decisions outside of regular scheduled meetings. Regular meetings are on the first and third Mondays of the month. Special meetings include items like the fee schedule and budget. How will you prioritize your role with the City Council and your other commitments?
Yep, that's a good question. And as I said, I think the reason I'm kind of, you know, interested is because I'm feeling that at this point in my life and career and family, that I have the available time. And I would look forward to being an active City Council member, you know, not necessarily just kind of showing up to do the minimum and, you know, voting on staff recommendations, but hopefully helping, doing the homework and research into various issues, making, helping make some of the tough decisions that may need to be made. I do also work and live within walking distance of City Hall. And being a kind of self-employed, I, I kind of set my own schedule, so I can usually drop what I'm doing at a pretty short notice and, and be available for anything that comes up unexpectedly. And I guess, as far as availability goes, yeah, I think, I, I certainly feel that I would have plenty of time to make myself available and, you know, would look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your process. And you can have a seat in the audience.
All right.
And we will see who are next candidate.
The next candidate to be interviewed is Henry Watherspoon.
to the City Council. If you'd like to give us a synopsis of Henry Watherspoon and your reasons why you'd like to join the council.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Figured it was worth second try throwing my hat in the ring. I'm a Fortuna resident, born and raised. I've grown up in Humboldt County all my life. I went to school here in Fortuna. I also went to school in Ferndale and Eureka, kind of jumped around a little bit. And it's, you know, been great being around Fortuna and, and seeing it grow as I grow. I currently go back and forth between Fortuna and my family's property on Highway 36, and that's where I run my business, Bridgemore River Ranch. We do a lot of timber products that goes to Ayers Distribution in Humboldt, at Humboldt Hill, and mainly firewood. So that goes to all the grocery stores and so on and so forth. I, I've really wanted to be more involved, and my life has been a little unconventional in the route I've gone between school and, and my work and things of that sort. And, you know, I saw this opportunity and I want to take it, and I, I think I'd have a good place here and, you know, on the council, and I think I could make a good difference and have some representation for the younger generation. I could make a good difference and have some representation for the younger generation. So I wanted to throw my hat in the ring and give it a go.
Okay, well, thank you. We have some more questions for you, and Kyle has the first one.
Good afternoon. Can you share an example of a difficult decision you've had to make in a leadership or professional role where your ethical choice wasn't necessarily the easiest or most popular? How did you approach it and what was the outcome?
So I'm going to go right back to my business that I'm currently running, both a leadership and a professional role. Managing people can be pretty difficult. There's a lot of interpersonal relationships to deal with and a lot of things you have to be sensitive of. And I've had to let a couple people go on, you know, for various different reasons. And one specific instance, I had an employee who was a great worker and I really appreciated them, but they were, you know, kind of jumping around in their life and they had a hard time showing up to work consistently. So ultimately I had to have a sit down with them and talk to them about, you know, letting them go. And everything worked out in the end. I gave them a grace period to find more work. And, you know, they even mentioned that with the changes in their life, they were already kind of getting ready to look for other work too, as they had moved from Fortuna to Eureka. So it was a, it was a good experience. It was the first person who I had to have the talk with. And it went well and we separated on good terms. And, you know, I still talk to him to this day.
Thank you.
Next question is, how would you approach economic development in order to increase revenue for the city of Fortuna? What would you do differently than what is currently being done to increase revenue?
I think Fortuna currently has a pretty solid approach on revenue. And I, I really think one of our strong suits is the events that Fortuna puts on, you know, whether it be the rodeo or a little fair or all the other events that, you know, are constantly going out in the Chamber of Commerce newsletter. And I don't think there's much to be changed there. If I had to do something different per se, it would be, you know, just looking into expanding upon what we already do really well. I know that the Great Redwood Trail is kind of up in the air seemingly perpetually. I mean, it's making progress, but there's so much going on with that and it's going to be going right through Fortuna. So that might be something to look into with, you know, the added potential, this is a big what if, foot traffic that'll come through, good and bad. But, you know, maybe working with the Chamber of Commerce, the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce to see if we could monetize some way the entry and exit points of that trail and, you know, connect those tourists basically to the city better and, and give them an avenue to explore our friendly city. And going from there, you know, on the event side of things, Ferndale is really always and has always been in the spotlight for the county fair. And that's because it's going on there. But Fortuna does see a lot of business as a result of the traffic we get annually from the county fair. And I think it's important to maybe highlight that and try to put Fortuna in the spotlight a little bit more, whether it be working with, you know, the county or like I said earlier, the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce to involve small businesses more and, and try to put Fortuna out there and give us the spotlight a little bit. Because, you know, it's not just Ferndale and the county that gets a lot of business from the county fair, but, you know, the whole Eel River Valley. And there's something there that Fortuna can really take advantage of.
Well, my next question is, what is your vision for Fortuna, looking down the road?
So my vision for Fortuna, having grown up here and see Fortuna grow along with me, it kind of goes hand in hand with our core beliefs of, you know, keeping Fortuna a friendly city. And I think we have a lot going for us and we have some very strong foundations. And I think it's important to, you know, strengthen those foundations and build upon them in a meaningful way, you know, with anybody who essentially has skin in the game, like the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce and, and, and just keep things moving the way they are.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was just taking my last notes. I have the last question. Frequently the city council is called upon to attend special meetings like today to make policy decisions outside of regular scheduled meetings. Regular meetings are on the first and third Monday of the month. Special meetings include items like the fee schedule and budget. How would you prioritize your role with the city council and your other commitments?
So I want to go back to being a small business owner. I'm no stranger to tackling adversity. I have to handle all my own repairs because I'm out in the middle of nowhere, out on my family's property. I have to make a lot of commutes. We've had a lot of struggles with the road conditions on Highway 36. So there's been a lot of challenges to deal with managing my business and keeping that going. But, you know, there are perks to running my own business. I'm able to make my schedule flexible and, and, and make things happen. And as I said, you know, when push comes to shove, I like to think that I'm pretty up for the game and I can make things happen. So having that flexibility is going to be key if I do get on the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you and thanks for your time and your answers. You can join us in the audience here.
Thank you.
Okay. The next person is Arlene Spires. She's joining the meeting now.
Hello, Arlene.
It's Sienna. If you can hear me, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you see me too?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So as you join us, we have a couple of questions to start off with, a brief.
Oh, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
How about now?
I can hear you a little, I'll just try to really listen.
Okay, well, what I was going to say is, we have a couple of questions for you to start off with, a two-minute scenario, synopsis of Arlene and a why you feel you want to run for city council.
Okay, thank you. My family and I moved here in 1976 and I graduated from Hightville Elementary School, Fortuna Union High School, and College of the Redwoods. I have a background in business and government finances, including everything from budgets to payroll. I purchased my house in Fortuna 32 years ago. I have one child, a grown daughter, and she attended schools in Fortuna, graduating from Fortuna High, College of the Redwoods, the Cal Poly Humboldt, so I'm very proud of her. She is also gifted with three grandchildren. As a grandma, I've watched many basketball, baseball, football games, too. As members of the council know, I have previously run for city council and I attend city council meetings regularly. And I want to engage in my community and give back to it. The past few years have been tough for Fortuna, but the council has done a great job balancing the needs of the community with available resources. I believe that my financial management skills will allow me to contribute to the work of this council to keep Fortuna moving forward.
Okay, thank you. We have some follow-up questions and council member Kyle Conley will start off.
Good afternoon. Can you share an example of a difficult decision you've had to make in leadership or professional role where the ethical choice wasn't necessarily the easiest or most popular? How did you approach it and what was the outcome?
Thanks, Kyle. Um, let's see. Well, when I was managing payroll, I noticed a senior employee was getting extra overtime payments that weren't approved. And I knew reporting it would ruffle some feathers, but staying quiet didn't sit right with me. So I gathered all the document, documentation and double-checked the rules. Then I took it to my supervisor. Not everyone was thrilled, but it led to fixing the problem and taking controls to avoid it happening again.
Thank you.
Hi, Arlene, this is Tammy. I have the next question. How would you approach economic development in order to increase revenue for the city of Fortuna? And the second part is, what would you do differently than what is currently being done to increase revenue?
Oh, thank you. Thanks, Tammy. I thought a lot about our economic stance and I see our most significant challenge as the need to diversify our economic base. We need to be able to adapt to changing trends and opportunities that are often outside of our control. Now to do this, we need to create a plan that will leverage our unique strengths, such as our natural resources, our sunny location, and our friendly community character, to attract new industries and residents. I believe that my, that with my background in business, financial planning and management, I can make significant contributions to creating that plan and support its execution and monitoring for success. A couple of items that I believe we should really look into are, first, the growing cannabis market. Fortuna has an opportunity to be an important part of this market. There are many ways that Fortuna could benefit from participating within this market. We could put in place business-friendly policies to attract growers, sellers, and processors to increase our tax base. In the national scene, many think that Humboldt County will become a boutique source of cannabis, and that market will be well-suited to Fortuna's assets and resources. Secondly, family-friendly infrastructure. While Fortuna is definitely a family community, our infrastructure lacks family-friendly enterprises to attract new families to Fortuna or even to support existing families that live here. For instance, our theaters, it's empty, there's no bowling alley, no arcade, and no community youth center. The new pool is a huge step in the right direction, and I think there is a lot more that we can do to make Fortuna's infrastructure better.
Okay, thank you. I have another question also. What is your vision for Fortuna?
Well, I envision a Fortuna that thrives as a harmonious blend of growth and community spirit, where the city attracts small businesses, innovative ventures, and tourism, while supporting existing local enterprises. Where brands and partnerships are leveraged to fund projects and enhance infrastructure and services. Where residents feel a deep sense of belonging with accessible resources, cultural events, and programs that celebrate Fortuna's unique heritage and values. Where we make investments in green initiatives, renewable energy, and responsible development to ensure that growth doesn't come at the expense of Fortuna's natural beauty or small-town charm. Where transparent and fiscally responsible decision-making builds trust and ensures that every dollar is used effectively for the benefit of the community. In my vision, Fortuna remains a place that feels like home, a city that preserves its roots while gracing the future.
Have one more in just a moment.
Hi, Arlene. Last question. Frequently the city council is called upon to attend special meetings to make policy decisions outside of regular scheduled meetings. Regular meetings are on the first and third Mondays of the month. Special meetings include items like fee schedule and budget. How would you prioritize your role with the city council and your other commitments?
Thank you. Well, for instance, right now I am out of town due to a family medical emergency and I was able to balance things so that I can do both, I can prepare for my family and I'm here for this interview. Also, my commitment has been demonstrated by regularly attending city council meetings. And when it comes to special meetings, I have a flexible work schedule and my supervisor supports my participation on the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you for your participation and your time. We'll have a, one, one more interviewee left. And so you can, I guess, stay online and we'll be back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our final interviewee is Ariane Kianapi.
He's not present?
He is not.
Do you want to check and see if he's online for some reason? Okay, well, that concludes your interviews for this afternoon. And so if you could take out your voting sheets and fill out your first, second, and third choices, and then turn those over to Sienna, we will take a five-minute break once you've turned them in and we'll tabulate. Oh, public comment, sorry about that. Oh, my gosh. My apologies, everyone, sorry.
So yes, prior to our voting, this is opportunity for public comment. If anybody has anything they'd like to say?
Hi, I'm Doug Strel. This is new for me. I don't normally get up and comment on this kind of stuff, but you guys have a really hard job to do. And I thought I could add a little to it, maybe to make it easier or harder. But there is, there is one candidate, all of them were fantastic, so no matter what you do, you've done the right thing. I've been in this position as a candidate on this side and had to do these things myself. So I know how hard it was for these people to show up and commit themselves, so it's a, it's a good deal. But there's one that stands out to me, which is Tina Christensen. And it mainly because the whole time I was involved in city government, she seemed to be everywhere. She seems to be involved in the county and everything else that goes on. She understands Fortuna. She understands how to have a development on a planned, special way, so you just don't hit and miss. She's organized. And it's just, it's a, it's, it's a fantastic thing to have somebody that's been that involved, that wants to get involved with you guys and to make the city of Fortuna a better place to live. So I could ramble on forever, but you, you kind of got the gist. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Well, I kind of have the same.
Well, I kind of have the same comments as Doug. In reading the applications and listening to all of the candidates, Tina clearly rises to the top. You know, we've only got a little over a year and a half for this person to be in this position. And as you all know, there is a learning curve to coming onto the City Council. Tina is the most qualified to step right in and be able to be helpful without going through so much of a learning curve as the other ones. You know, the first couple of years, you're really not sure what you're supposed to do. You're really sitting back, learning what your duties are. Tina's been involved throughout the county for over 50 years, speaking at public meetings. She knows public process. She knows how public meetings are supposed to progress. She knows the Brown Act. She knows budget. She knows all of the things. She's smart. She's tenacious. She's determined. She will fight hard for the city. She is a very strong leader. And I've heard rumors that if Tina was appointed, staff would quit. Well, you know what? I heard those same rumors since 2010 when I ran for City Council. Staff needs to be professional. The City Council person needs to be professional. No one quit. We developed some long-term relationships where those same staff members that I was told were quit now help me with city events. And we have a relationship that will probably last a long time. So, that should not come into play when you guys are thinking about whatever you're thinking about. If you've heard those rumors, if you've been approached by somebody saying that, that should not even be part of your deliberation. I think that probably sums it up good enough. I think you guys can see that she definitely is the strongest candidate.
Thank you.
There's a comment from somebody who's participating via Zoom in the chat, and it's from Jonathan, and they would like to express their support for Tina Christensen for the position.
Okay. There's no more public comment at this time? And nobody else online?
Then, then we move into your paper voting.
Yeah. It's Sianna. Yes, it is. Not just because of the temperature either. You didn't know you was going to get thrown into it this quick, did you?
I'm just going to, um, there was a little bit of confusion over, um, over the votes. I think that cover sheets have the wrong names. I just want to make sure that we have the right votes. So, Carlos, I have your first choice is Tina, your second choice is Abe, your third choice is Arlene, is that correct?
Correct.
Tammy, I have your first choice is Abe, your second choice is Arlene, and no third choice.
Correct.
Mike, I have your first choice is Tina, your second choice is Abe, and your third choice is Henry.
Correct.
Okay, if that is correct, which you all have said, then you have, um, somebody has my point, and that is Abe. And so, at this point, we're able to make a motion and go.
I'll make a motion to appoint Abe to the City Council.
Second.
Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
We'll kind of share the mic here to try to pick it up. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Abe Stephens.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitu- Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental, mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Don't be late.
You may want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.